All right, it's Mr. Duff. We have to do presentations, huh?
Yes, we do. We have our sixth graders from Warren and Westbrookfield Elementary School. Come on up. Stand right over here so you can see the screen. Mackenzie, come on over. So the first thing that we're gonna ask you to do is introduce yourself to the school committee, nice and loud, and where you guys are from.
Okay, hello, my name's Ella, I'm from Warren Community Elementary School.
Um, hi, my name's Taya, also from Warren Community Elementary School.
So I'll give you the A in the middle because I can hear what you're saying. The other two, you guys speak up a little bit, okay? Like I said, you'll think that you're yelling, but you're really not.
Okay, okay, so WCES recent learning, A and F, we are studying upon our understanding the border of the region of excellence. In science, we are learning about matter and limits, the real life, analyzing text, music, science, and in social study, we are learning reading, ancient history.
This is WBES first?
So in Westbrookfield, we had activities, we sang a sing-along, we had our entire school, um, come together to sing songs. Each grade, we decided a song to sing within the school. For the sixth grades, teachers versus snowball dance, an annual, um, work tradition. So every, uh, every year, sixth graders go against, um, teachers to a volleyball game. And we practice for about a month or so against, uh, to beat the teachers. The snowball dance is a dance that we do with the kindergarten versus sixth grade. And everybody is invited and the music is great, it's so fun for especially young girls to get their first dance. And I just think it was a great thing.
But, um, spirit weekend, WCES, so the members of the leadership club are making a spirit week that we call the March. We're gonna have themed days and a scavenger hunt, and we're learning how to delegate responsibilities and build community through this work. That's what we got.
So, that's it?
That's it.
All right, so I got one question. So Westbrookfield, sixth grade versus the teachers in volleyball, who won?
Um, most, there is one, like, there are separate teams, there's four teams. There was only one team that won, and then throughout the period, they lost.
Anybody got any questions? All right, you guys go off the hook.
Nice job.
So I'm sure you guys have homework. You're more than welcome to sit and listen to the student advisory council do their presentation, or you're free to go home.
Okay.
All right, thank you, guys.
Nice job, Ella. Do you guys have any questions?
Yeah, please.
Yeah, thanks.
If anyone doesn't know us, they're not, they shouldn't be here.
All right, you guys ready?
Hi. The senior citizens dance was hosted by Stuko here at Quabog on January thirteenth. Uh, they invited senior citizens from the community to come to Quabog. Uh, the Quabog Cooking Club provided food, they cooked it in, um, Ms. Fear Guard's cooking room. And they also provided, provided drinks and other stuff. There was dancing, there was music. They put posters out and like the senior centers and stuff like that around. So, um, I think it was a good turnout. The middle school semi-formal, or the snowball dance, Stuko also hosted, which was January twelfth. And, um, it was seven dollars or five dollars of canned goods, so they were collecting canned goods again. And they sold concessions and they decorated. It was, it was a great night. I know a lot of people went from middle school, so that was always a success. The Europe trip, oh, well, first Washington DC, um, they're going on a DC trip. And everything's right on schedule. The payments were due on the nineteenth, so I think that's all good. And, um, the high school Europe trip is taking place April tenth to the twenty-second. I don't, oh, that's supposed to be twenty-second, that's not, it's not two days, I didn't see the slide. Um, we're traveling to Switzerland, Italy, France, and Spain. Um, there was an in-school meeting with Ms. Youngberg and Ms. Youngberg, talking about like kinda safety and money. Things that we should know for traveling around Europe together. And there's also gonna be a parent-student meeting, um, closer to the trip. There might be a two, but right now, there's only scheduled one, um, coming up closer to the trip to kinda prepare us for like packing and any additional information that we should know. Sports, um, boys are actually playing buster right now, and girls varsity are also doing well. They currently have a winning record. And, uh, the winter boys and girls track won their meet against Oxford, uh, Wednesday. They've been doing pretty well this season too. And great job to all of them. Yeah, go ahead, just. Um, oh, and then Alex training, they did that this, was it this morning?
Yeah.
Yeah, it was this morning. Um, the Warren Police Department met with seventh grade students and staff to discuss different Alex protocols. Um, and it was a great opportunity for students to ask questions and interact with the local authorities. It's always good information that they should probably know.
So we have three lockdown drills a year, at least three. Um, and seventh grade is different than sixth grade. We have different protocols when you get to the middle high school. So the police do a great job of speaking to the seventh graders about that.
Um, the emergency response bags, Warren Westbrookfield, uh, fire departments donated these bags, um, into the classrooms to have necessary materials for safety situations. Uh, we wanna thank both of the, uh, fire departments for their generosity and also to Mr. Urban for assembling these bags, taking time out of his day to do that. So that was very nice of both of them. Okay, so, um, the boys alumni team had a pickup basketball game here in the gym. And it was just a very good way for the current basketball, um, varsity team to reconnect with the old players, not the old players, but the alumni players. Um, and then the theater department is also gonna be performing The Addams Family on February ninth. The tickets for adults are gonna be fifteen dollars and then twelve for students, um, seniors. Um, and the students have been working really hard, so it should be a very good, uh, production.
And, uh, Twenty First Century After School program is going to be providing a dinner show for senior citizens in the community. Uh, there'll be flyers put out at both senior centers where, uh, they can come, they can have dinner and go to the show at no cost. If they'd like to make a donation to the, uh, to the Art Booster Club, they're allowed to do that. Um, but they will have the opportunity to come have a nice dinner and then go see The Addams Family. That'll be on Saturday, February tenth. And those flyers will be put up on Facebook and also in the senior center, uh, senior centers in town.
And just some senior updates, um, senior pictures and quotes are due on February first, and cap and grounds are also available for purchase now. So it's highly recommended that we buy them sooner rather than later because the date's quickly approaching.
How many days? Any idea?
I, I don't, I don't, I was counting. I have no idea.
Just.
I probably.
Do you know how many days?
They don't want it.
I don't even wanna know.
Are you, I know you're counting down, how many days?
I'm not counting down. I told you, I extended the time so we could have more time together.
You know that our class is graduating the latest out of any class that, in the last ten years, you said?
In my tenure.
Oh, yeah.
June eighth?
Yep, May thirty-first is our last day. Yep, isn't that nice?
Isn't that sweet? I mean, to wanna spend time with you like that.
So nice. Anything else?
Is that it?
That's it.
All right, so I have a couple of questions. I always have a couple of questions. So Europe trip, are you guys filming?
Yep.
Have you guys ever been here?
No.
Are you looking forward to it?
Yeah.
Which, which country are you looking forward to the most?
Switzerland, Spain.
You have no hesitation of that one. Why Switzerland?
Uh, I don't know, just the geography, it's always been like in my mind together. I feel Spain.
Spain?
Yeah.
Now, do you guys speak Spanish?
Yeah.
Can you speak Spanish?
No.
You're talking.
Yeah.
All right, well, thank you, guys. Anybody have any questions for me? I have a question.
Do you have any idea of roughly like what the turnout was for the senior citizen dance, the ballpark and number?
Around twenty.
Around how many?
Twenty.
And this was the second year we did that, correct?
We did one on a weeknight, this one was on a weekend. Um, so, um, I think we could've done a better job of advertising, to be honest with you. Um, and that was some of the feedback that we got from some of the people that showed up. Um, so right now, and I know that you have some experience with this Mr. Burgess, because the marketing class developed a lot of signs that are outside of the building. The marketing class is currently working on the flyer, they will select which flyer we use to put in the senior city, to put in the senior centers on Wednesday. Um, so we're gonna go in and look at it, and we're gonna advertise it. I think it's a great opportunity for, um, folks in the community to come and see what happens at the school and get, you know.
So I, I agree, that's what I like about what you, uh, were talking about with the invite to the theater program and the, the different events that we have there. I think it's a great way to include our seniors within the community.
All right, any other questions? I'm sure you guys got either homework or basketball to go watch. Something like that, thank you.
Thank you, guys.
All right, thank you, next one? All right, Mr. Duff, if you got one more?
I do, this is a very, this is a privilege for me to introduce you, Kennedy Sloan. Kennedy is our superintendent scholar for the class of twenty twenty-four. Uh, Kennedy received this honor and recognition as having the highest GPA in her class. We did honor her, uh, once already, but we are going to a luncheon at Holy Cross College where every school district, depending upon their size, can either, um, either have one or two participants from their school with the highest GPA that'll be there. So Kennedy is gonna be recognized at Holy Cross, uh, as well as being put in a magazine as one of, uh, you know, one of the top scholars within Massachusetts. Very fortunate to have her in our district, uh, she's taken a very challenging course load and has excelled extremely well. Um, so I did wanna introduce her to you, and I know that you guys will probably have a couple of questions for her. Um, but I am honored to, to recognize her as a superintendent scholar.
So I don't know if Kennedy knows, she might, but I'm sure Mr. Duff knows. What is Kennedy's grade point average right now?
My class number is like four point six or something.
Four point six. Okay, so straight A's is four point oh, right? Okay, so, next question. How many AP classes have you taken and how many AP classes are you taking this year?
I've taken four and I've taken six.
You're taking six AP classes this year? Holy mackerel. Okay, so I'm assuming that you're thinking of going to college?
Yep.
Any, uh, any, any thoughts, any plans, any, uh, acceptances or targets or anywhere you wanna go?
Going to Florida, Indiana.
Okay.
Metro wants that, but Florida, it's a logic, I think, I also guess.
Thanks. Anybody have any other questions? Four point six, I'm assuming that's not even close, we should add, right? Like, there's, there's nobody even close to four point six.
Not quite that high.
Not quite that.
It's a very competitive class, uh.
It's a very smart science, staying, staying away from it. We got a lot of really smart kids in the school, so. Well, Kennedy, congratulations. I know you get to go, uh, have lunch with Mr. Duff, that's always a fun thing, right? But, uh, keep up the good work, good luck at school, and, uh, yeah, let us know where, uh, where you end up. And I'm sure we'll, uh, we'll hear more great things from you in the future. Anybody else have any questions?
Took them all.
I took them all, sorry. All right, thank you. Wasn't that, wasn't that painful? All right, superintendent's report.
Yep.
Mr. Duff?
All right, so QRMS generator update, uh, the generator at Quabog has been fixed. And, um, the town of Warren did pick up the bill for the generator because it is a, we use this building as a shelter. Uh, the cost of the project was three thousand twenty-nine dollars. Um, we did ask the town of Warren to help out because the primary use of the generator is a shelter. Um, and if we wanna use it as a shelter, then we need to, uh, continue to have it working properly. So they did do that. Lighting and built, building envelope incentives, um, we talked about this at the building and budget subcommittees. Uh, we did get approved for a lighting upgrade at Quabog Regional School District to the tune of three hundred thousand dollars to have all of our LED lights, change, all of our lights switched out to LED, uh, both interior and exterior. So phase one will be interior at Quabog, phase two will be exterior at, uh, Quabog. We did receive about sixty-five thousand dollars in incentives from National Grid. Um, and the remaining balance will be a hundred percent OBR, which is on bill repayment. So our electric bill will either stay the same, or it'll go down a little bit, the bill will not go up. Um, so it's a great way for us to invest in our future. After five years, we should recognize about a forty-five thousand dollar savings per year on electricity due to this upgrade. Uh, we did have, uh, the building envelope project at, uh, Westbrookfield Elementary School. We had applied for eighty-seven thousand five hundred. We were awarded thirty-seven thousand five hundred, which we'll use to do the door sweeps. We're trying, we can't change the mechanics of the doors or the skins of the door. If we do that, then that would make us, uh, it would ruin our eligibility for our doors and windows project two years down the road. So what we can do is we can change out the door sweeps and we can put additional foam caulking and insulation around areas that we have concerns. So they are gonna start working on that project very shortly. That project, again, is a hundred percent, uh, OBR, which is on bill repayment, which will recognize through less use of oil or natural gas in Wa, in Westbrookfield, um, because the heat is continuously going. In Warren, uh, we, we weren't sure whether we would, um, qualify for the lighting upgrade. Lo and behold, at Warren Community Elementary School, we met with them on the holiday on Monday, I forget which Monday holiday that just happened, Martin Luther King Day. We met with them on Monday, um, and Warren Community Elementary School is going to qualify for a lighting upgrade for the entire facility, inside and outside. Once again, there's a lot of incentives on this, plus the hundred percent OBR. So the school district is continuing to find ways to be greener and financially responsible, looking towards how we can reduce our budget, which ultimately reduces the local assessments over time. Um, so we've worked on those three projects, which is exciting. Uh, we will continue to look for opportunities and work with, um, work with the team, uh, from Guardian and with the green community incentives. We did, uh, the next one is our final inspection at WC, CES HVAC. We met with the state auditor, or the state inspector, uh, last week, last Wednesday. The state inspector came out, I met with the state inspector, Mr. Estrella, and town administrator, uh, Ferrera. The state inspector was very pleased with the work that had been done. Uh, we went through, we looked at some of the thermostats at Warren Community Elementary School, looked at the control unit within the mechanical room. Uh, we did, we talked for a bit about some opportunities that may be coming up. There are some opportunities for us to work with the town and apply for something as a school where we could get double the money if we go in as two entities. So we're gonna continue those, uh, conversations with the inspector and with the town administrators from both Warren and Westbrookfield to see if there's other things that we can do.
Well, you know, I'm gonna interrupt you.
Yep.
You mentioned something that the auditors, I mean, that the inspector said to you at the budget subcommittee meeting, I thought it might be a good idea to bring it up.
So the inspector does all of the inspections for the entire state. He said he has not met a school district that's been as proactive about energy updates, uh, being green community, uh, being environmentally sound as Quabog. He says you don't see school districts that get as many incentives as Quabog or the Quabog Regional School District, both Warren, Westbrookfield, and Quabog. He said the work that we're doing here is, is exemplary, it's commendable, but you can't believe the number of projects that we're getting done. Um, and coming from a state inspector that, you know, carries some weight. So we're very happy to get that feedback from him. On the food service audit, I did report back in December that we were having an audit on December twentieth, twenty-first, and twenty-second. It was a great time to have an audit. Out of that audit came some changes that we have to put into place. One of them is we have to update our wellness policy, um, we need to change some language on the internet, uh, to be compliant with civil rights policies. One of the big things that came out of this meeting, and this is gonna come up at a future budget subcommittee meeting, is the way that the revolving account works for our food program, it is more than paying for itself, which we were very excited about. But you're only allowed to carry three months of revenue at a time. You can't exceed that three-month revenue. We have, uh, exceeded that three-month revenue by quite a bit, uh, by about a hundred thousand dollars. So we have a hundred thousand dollars that we're gonna have to spend down within the food service, um, department itself, which seems like a lot of money, but we do need new, uh, new stoves in Westbrookfield. There are a few things that Missy's gonna come to the, come to the budget subcommittee and the building subcommittee with. There are things that we've been putting off not doing and saving, but according to, um, according to the audit that we just had, we will get cited for it if we don't spend that amount down, um, which will give us the opportunity to upgrade our kitchen areas. So Missy is in the process of looking at the equipment that she does need to upgrade. I told her I would bring her to the budget subcommittee meeting after we got through, uh, Jan- January twenty-ninth, February fifth, and February twelfth. So it would probably be closer to the March meeting. We have time to spend that money down because we won't have the actual report with the findings until towards the end of the school year. But we did have a follow-up meeting with, um, the auditors, and they were very pleased with what was going on. Some things that we had to change was the way that we distribute our breakfast in the morning. Um, there has to be a legitimate count by the teachers or by one of the folks that are, are serving the meals. Uh, they made some accommodations to make sure that those meals were being counted accurately, both at Warren Elementary and at Westbrookfield Elementary. And the last thing that we need to do is we need to fire extinguisher training for our new staff. Uh, Chief La Boy provides that training for us and has in the past, so Missy has already reached out to him to make sure that we get that taken care of, which will check all of our boxes on our food service audit. Check that one, that one. Uh, for the NIASC update, I wanna keep the committee, uh, up to date on where we're at. We're currently preparing, our visit will be March of twenty twenty-six, but we're in the middle of a self-reflection, self-study, um, the guide right now. And there are five standards with fifty-seven indicators that we have to check our boxes with. Um, NIASC has changed their philosophy where you're looking at your own, own school system. They're driving the changes that they see have to happen. They're not necessarily looking to find faults within the school system, they're trying to find the areas where you can improve. So it's not a question of whether you're going on morning now, it's a question of finding out where those areas of improvement are, developing a plan, and then they'll provide regular feedback to us. That official visit won't be until March of twenty twenty-six, however, it's a three-year process to get ready for that actual visit. So the departments are doing a great job hitting all those standards now. I know tomorrow, every department is meeting with the standards leaders, so there's different groups within the NIASC section to go over what those standards are and evidence for the indicators that we have to show. So Principal Hanfield has been doing a great job with that, I'm very pleased about that. The school committee election timeline is coming up. Madeline, um, for those of you whose seats will be up this, this year, Madeline will be forwarding an email to you um, to see if you are going to rerun for school committee. I strongly, um, I strongly hope that you do. I think that the committee has been doing a tremendous job in supporting our, our folks. And then Southern Worcester County Educational Collaborative, I had a board meeting on Friday. Um, I am part of the SWECC Budget Subcommittee, um, for finances, which I'm very excited about. Uh, so we have an idea where that budget is gonna end up, um, in terms of what our increase will be. Right now, the state is saying that the largest increase that we're gonna have, last year was fourteen percent. They allowed special education schools to increase their tuition up to fourteen percent. This year, it's four point six nine percent. So all of our increases with our special education out-of-district tuitions have been based on the four point six nine percent. I am hopeful that Southern Worcester County Educational Collaborative comes in a little bit lower than four point six nine percent. Um, and I'm confident that we'll be able to get some work done there to help with some of the savings on our out-of-district placements. The next meeting there is on February twenty-sixth. I do have a budget subcommittee meeting with them on February twenty-sixth as well. And that's it for me.
All right, thank you. All right, so just, uh, one quick comment and, uh, you know, a little thing. So obviously, the hundred thousand dollars to spend down on the food service revolving account will not take long. I mean, as we all know, the cost of commercial-grade kitchen equipment is not cheap, so I don't think we'll have any issue.
Well, let's be honest, too, it's something we've been doing, it's just gonna force us to be, accelerate the process a little bit, right?
And there's always, and there's always something that needs to be replaced. So, I mean, I know we've done a very good job of keeping things modern, but, you know, through, through green communities and all the other things that we're doing, I mean, if we can get a more energy-efficient oven or something along those lines, you know, we're kinda knocking off two birds with one stone. Um, so I think that's a, that's a good avenue for us to increase efficiencies in the, in the food service department.
Hey, touch base on that real quick.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, and the money that comes through that revolving account from food services is not allowed to be expended on any other programs. It is directly to go to food services. That's how that grant to the federal government, that's how that money operates. So we couldn't take a hundred thousand dollars to offset the operating budget. That money is specifically designated to food services.
Good question, if it, um, is that actually used on equipment or since she, if there was a great deal on food, for example, for the freezer? Does she purchase that too, or is it only for equipment?
It's for equipment or personnel. You can't buy other products with it.
Okay.
Um, but Missy is, I know that in our last budget, um, when we did the employee benefit manual, and we were able to get comparable rates for, because we were really underpaying our kitchen staff, um, she feels as if her kitchen is adequately staffed at this point, and the better use of the funds would be on equipment.
I think you made some capital, they use that money to pay the salaries?
Yes.
And they use it to pay their insurance, kind of, too?
All of it, yep.
So they're using it as far as salary, insurance, it's all coming out of that?
Out of that revolving account from the meals that we provide. Yep, so that's not a cost to the town at all. Um, once again, we look for ways to offset the budget, this is another way that we've done that.
I think we even to the point of, of a portion of the electric bill and, you know, the, the propane that's used strictly in the cafeteria. I mean, it's all, it's all paid out of the, the revolving account, food service, so, yeah, we've done a very good job of, of putting in as much of it as we can. And we still, uh, Missy's doing a very good job managing that, managing that.
Well, let's not, let's not lose where we were three years ago either, right?
Three years ago, we were a world of hurt.
You know, the concept of, you know, in, I, I hate to say it, no, COVID wasn't something we wanted, but it, this is one of the side effects of it. And with, with, with getting the free meals for everybody that we started before that, and, and the way it's propagated to where we are today, did kinda save us, you know, a few hundred thousand dollars that we were, they're in the hole there, that just in general, over time, it's been able to pay itself back. And for the good and the bad, we've stayed within that revolving account to make sure we were breaking even or better from that point. And then, I mean, it's really just, there all the work that Missy's done, and, you know, I don't think we can ever say it enough.
Question for Jason, if food, you mean, meals are free, right?
For the students.
For students, but how do we generate money?
We get reimbursement from the federal government based upon the number of meals that we serve. Um, so you take the cost of the meal, no, you take the reimbursement minus the cost of the meal, and that's how we generate our revenue from that.
And that rate is fixed regardless of what we cost, what the cost is that we have for each of those meals. So Missy's done a really nice job to try and meet those, to break even as much as possible, and go from there. That's how we've, we've done it. And, and, and obviously, the more meals you sp, you, you sell, it, it, you know, the vol, it's just like anything, more volume goes a long way and you can, you can make up from those numbers, right?
So part of the reason we had the audit, part of the reason we had to change the way we were serving breakfast at Warren and Westbrookfield Elementary Schools is because the way we were doing it would make it a non-reimbursable meal if we don't know who the meal is going to. So when you know where the meal is going and you check the name off, then it becomes a reimbursable meal. They didn't, they, for the day, we didn't get fifty-four reimbursable breakfasts, but we found out why they weren't reimbursable, and they only charged us one day for it, um, but now we have that process in place, so every meal is reimbursable. If we didn't know that, then we wouldn't know.
How long do we get a month?
Oh, it's on a monthly basis. Yep, yep, Missy has to put, put in the re, number of reimbursable meals every day. So that's, that new program that we had to spend ten thousand dollars on to be, um, compatible with the state and the federal government, those meals go into that system, and that system drives your check that you get from the federal government.
No, correct me if I'm wrong, right, we're getting reimbursed for breakfast and for lunch, right? So there's two meals a day per student that we can get reimbursed for.
All right, and then I just wanna, uh, touch base on, uh, the generator update, just go on record by publicly thanking the town of Warren for, uh, for paying that bill. Um, obviously, every penny that you don't have to pay helps us, and, I mean, it was three thousand dollars. three thousand dollars, but three thousand dollars is three thousand hours, so thank you to the town of Warren for, uh, for paying for the generator repair. All right, we do have one set, well, not a set, but we have meeting minutes from December eighteenth, um, to vote on, if anybody has any questions, additions, additions. Now, uh, I haven't seen it. So you were trying to, I was like, you can't, looks good to me, right?
Your famous person, don't you, uh, which way?
Make a motion to accept a meeting on December eighteenth, when you're in the room.
Second. What you made in December.
He texted me today, he's like, what time's the meeting?
Any further discussions? All favor? Post, intentions? Okay, uh, in the packet you have, um, the summer newsletter, um, the information that Mr. Duff talked about, the, uh, the lighting incentives for phase one and two for Quabog, um, and a copy of the minutes that we just had. Financial Business Matters, Mr. Duff.
So Ms. Wagner and I, or Financial Director Wagner and I had met with, um, Lizaq Bus Company, and we've talked with the budget and building subcommittee at length about going out to bid, uh, for transportation. We have one more year that we can opt into transportation. The increase next year on transportation would be two percent. Um, and having it be two percent, I think, may be a better alternative than actually going out to bid and getting hit with a higher percentage than two percent. Um, we have some other discussions that, uh, eventually will come to the school committee that we're talking about now, uh, that could impact how we do our transportation in the future. So it would be our recommendation, both, uh, Financial Director Wagner and my recommendation that we opt in for that final year at two percent. We did discuss this at the building and budget subcommittees as well, um, and explained our rationale behind that, but I think a two percent increase going into the next fiscal year is one that I think it would be wise of us to, to take on at this point, and then to look at going out to bid for the following twenty-five, twenty-six school year.
So the only thing I'll add to that is, if you don't mind, Mr. Duff said, we did talk about this at the, uh, budget meeting that we had on the eighth, which would, was the normal, uh, we had obviously other ones, but the budget was, was for normal business as well. And there was a, we did vote to recommend the two percent and taking the option this year from, from the, uh, budget subcommittee. And like Mr. Duff said, we did discuss this and it mi- limits the risk of, of increases from that perspective, and we, you know, not knowing where it could be, yeah, sure, um, things, you know, oil and things seem to be going down, but it lays, locks us in, at least we know where we are with having unknown, and not to mention above other things as well. There's a lot of stuff going on at the school, that is something that we don't have to worry about, it frees us up to look at other things as well, so it makes a lot of sense, and that's kinda, unless there's anybody from the budget subcommittee, I think I hopefully summed it up, what we talked about, and, uh, for that.
I think we had thought further down the road that there would be opportunities for things to be looked at in a different set of lights, maybe a year from where we are now, that to take the two percent for this year is a good timing in that when we have to relook at it a year from now, that will probably fit better with where we are at that point. But right now, we're in a pretty good situation to stick with what we've been offered.
With that being said, I will entertain a motion to, uh, extend the current transportation contract for the two thousand twenty-four, twenty-five year.
So moved.
A second.
A second, ready for the discussion? All in favor? Post, yes. Budget schedule.
So the budget schedule, we've been meeting on a regular basis with the budget subcommittee. Uh, Mr. Morgan will provide that update in the budget subcommittee update. We will, we did add an additional meeting on January twenty-ninth to the budget subcommittee, which is next Monday. Uh, we're hoping to have some more defined numbers from, uh, the preliminary numbers from the governor. And then what'll happen is on February fifth, we will present our preliminary budget to the budget subcommittee, and then on February twelfth, we'll present our preliminary budget to the full school committee. I've had conversations with Town Administrator Ferrera, and I've had conversations with Town Administrator San Angelo, letting them know that our thought process going into this budget was to be as transparent as we possibly could be. I think that we've been extremely transparent with everybody that has been at the table with us. Um, our goal is to present a budget to the full school committee, let the full school committee digest that budget for a month, ask questions on any pieces of the budget that you might have questions on, and then come back to the full school committee in March and approve the school's budget based upon what the school committee chooses to do with that budget. Um, I did let the, both town administrators know, uh, Town Administrator Ferrera and Town Administrator San Angelo, that I would be happy to bring Ms. Wagner to any meetings that they had, whether it was advisory board or select board, so that if they had any questions regarding our budget, I'm happy to present those budgets to them and to present it to anybody within the community that has questions. All right, we are moving forward with a very tight budget, there are not a lot of asks in that budget. We haven't put all the details into it, but based upon the line items that we can control, right now it was a one percent increase, but there will be a larger increase due to salaries and healthcare, and looking at what the needs are for the schools, which were, between the three buildings, there were five asks. Um, and so that'll, we'll see where that comes out. Um, but our goal is to present the budget to you guys on February twelfth, and then if you have questions or ideas on where we're at, then certainly, you know, we're all ears, it gives us a month to digest it and figure out the next steps. But I would say that my recommendation would be whatever budget the school committee votes on, on March eighteenth is our school, our school budget moving forward. We're not looking to reduce it, we're coming in with as low a number as we possibly can.
All right, subcommittee updates. Mr. Morgan.
Excuse me, so let me continue that conversation. So both on January eighth and January sixteenth, we had, uh, budget subcommittee meetings primarily focusing on the budget process. Um, this was pretty much where we start, um, and this is what we've done with all the different divisions or areas for the school, meaning the three principals for the diff- three different schools, and then, uh, special ed, uh, athletics, uh, uh, technology, um, central office and... Facilities, yeah, basically, Mark. Um, and went through that line item budget, um, many of the, uh, budgets, uh, members are here, but for the people that weren't there, um, I think it went quite well, we had some really good discussions, um, and following the, the, the philosophy, the one thing that was really good that Mr. Duff pointed out, um, I would, I say is we kinda went through and all agreed to this philosophy of how we were looking at this, uh, initially, uh, in that first meeting and what our approach was. And one of the biggest things that stands out, and I wanna reiterate, is the concept of trying to get the whole full committee, school committee, part of this process earlier than what we've done in the past. Basically, in the past, all this was done by the subcommittee, we, the full school committee about, got about a week to think about it, and then that was it. Uh, this was the idea like, like Mr. Duff has put forward, is having more of a month for everyone to, to dig- digest it and have those hu- further conversations with the full school committee. We'll still have the budget meetings, we'll still have those conversations as there, but the idea is to bring it to the full school committee, and if we need to have representation at those meetings, to have some discussions as well. So the, I would really, I'm gonna use this opportunity to really stress that for members of the school committee who, who are not here tonight, we really need to have you here, uh, for those meetings, starting in February if you're not, um, into March, because once we have that, I think it would be, uh, we all wanna be on the same page, we all wanna be able to talk to this budget, uh, with people of the community and the different towns, uh, from, not just myself, but, you know, from the full school committee. So, um, really, that's really the report, we went over the little items that we had to take care of on the eighth, but, um, like I said, our, the conversation with the different departments of the school went very well and, um, opened up a lot of eyes of where we are and where we really need to be, so more of that to come as you hear the budget, uh, in the next few weeks.
And the one thing that I would like to add is the dates for the budget subcommittee have been forwarded and have been forwarded prior to the meetings to, uh, the Board of Selectmen in both towns, both town administrators. These are public meetings, the public are welcome to attend, uh, budget subcommittee meetings. I know that we have had a representative here from one of the towns at each of our budget subcommittee meetings, but this is a process that the school committee does invest quite a bit of time in, um, and these are public meetings, and anybody in the public is welcome to attend these meetings, because at the end of the day, the school committee is responsible for approving a budget and sending that budget to town floor, to have that budget voted on, and as they do in the town, so it's our public meetings when they decide their department's budgets, in the regional school district, the school committee is responsible for adopting and approving a budget that gets put forward on town floor. Um, so it's, it's really important, and we will bring the budget to the towns, but the towns can be part of that budget process as well, starting in the beginning. Um, and those meetings are still posted, and the town officials and general public are more than welcome to attend those budgets, as the school committee puts their best foot forward to get these budgets reasonably.
I just, Ray, thank you for coming to the meetings, I know, uh, a lot of times it goes a little long, but, uh, there's some questions that you've added to those conversations that have been really helpful, so thank you for that as well. Our next meeting is next Monday.
And as we all know, we, we are the single largest department budget, you know, in, in, in both towns, as, as is every school in, you know, in every town in Congress, not just, not just Quabog, I mean, we're the largest dollar amount of the town's budget, so, I mean, it kinda makes sense to have town officials and representation here, so to be part of the process, so. Personnel, Mr. Landee.
Uh, let me talk about, start in, uh, in March, you, you, uh, I don't know, you see, I just feel, uh, so, putting up on my, you know, it's, uh...
So if you wanna put together some dates, um, yeah, we'll, we'll throw out, we'll throw out some dates to the, that's a question of the negotiating team and get it done, so that shouldn't take, shouldn't take very, very many minutes. All right, policy, Mr. Morris, you have a couple, huh?
Uh, I have dates at this time.
Building, I don't think I have a building subcommittee meeting last month, but Mr. Verge just...
There's not a meeting yet.
That's it, next meeting is, okay, wait, wait.
Yep.
That's it, focusing on the budget. Uh, Regional Agreement Committee, I, I meant to send out an invite to the, uh, committee today, but my paying job, uh, took precedence and that did not go out, but I am gonna try to schedule one, just so we can figure out a path moving forward, um, with that, there was no meeting scheduled to date.
Just, you know, if it was on, uh, we, kind of, pay for some, uh, if it was not going on, you know.
Okay. Uh, new business, we have none. Public here, opportunity for members of the public to, uh, ask questions or have comments about anything that was discussed on the agenda tonight. Mrs. Moreno, Mr. Capac.
I already talked to Mr. Morgan.
Yes.
My husband's company, one, uh, prior to the thing that he worked at, they did the lighting to LEDs back in two thousand fifteen, uh, and one thing, I showed him the document, and one thing he didn't see on there, doesn't mean it's not on there, is that he had changed it so to make sure that they got rid of all of the, um, all of the original lights, because that would be very pricey. So I just wanted to make sure you guys are going to add that in.
That's a good...
The, the disposal of the, the old bulbs.
Fluorescent.
Yeah, the fluorescent, I'm sorry.
Absolutely.
Right, so when he was working, he worked with Matt State, um, it wasn't in their original agreement, but he had them added in, they were happy, but...
There's only so many fluorescent bulbs you could take to Lowe's at a time, so we'd be making a lot of trips for a long time.
You were on a roll when you were up there, I didn't wanna stop, you had a good...
Oh, okay.
It's a good, no, that was really good, when we talked about it, it's huge.
Yeah, that is very helpful, so. Ray, anything for you?
No.
You're good, okay. All righty, we do not have to go into executive session, so I will entertain one more motion.
Wait, a second.
Is that, great? All favor?